For Tuesday, April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, voting meeting for the Exeter Township Board of School Directors. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Mr. Feig, can you please take your call?
Dr. Ann Herring.
Present.
John Fidler.
Here.
Dr. Andrea Battler.
Here.
Dr. David Hemberger.
Here.
Jason Mill.
Here.
Timothy Morgan.
Here.
Robert Quinter.
Here.
Julia Schaefer.
Here.
Allison Wilson.
Here.
All present.
Thank you, Mr. Feig. In addition to the nine board members in attendance this evening, we're also joined at the board table by our Solicitor Sharon Montaigne and members of the School District Administration, including Dr. Kristi Haller Superintendent, Mrs. Dawn Harris Assistant Superintendent, Mrs. Diane Skornavaki Director of Human Resources, and Mr. Brian Feig, who serves as our Business Administrator and Board Secretary. First on the agenda is recognition. Dr. Hallen?
I'm actually going to have Mrs. Harris speak to this recognition as this individual is a part of her team, and we're very pleased that she could be here with us this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Haller. So, every year, the Berks County Intermediate Unit hosts the Annie Sullivan Awards Ceremony. As you may be aware, Annie Sullivan is Helen Keller's teacher, mentor, and friend, and the award ceremony is intended to honor outstanding candidates in the county who excel at working with students with disabilities. There were fourteen nominees throughout the county this year, and Exeter's nominee was Mrs. Patricia File. Patty, Miss Patty, as she is affectionately known as at Lorraine, works at Lorraine Elementary as one of our power professionals who works with our students who have behavioral and social and emotional needs. And Mrs. Hodge, her principal, is here tonight to honor her again here in this setting and to share with all of you what we shared at the county level regarding our feelings and thoughts about Mrs. File.
Thank you, Dawn. I'm going to read what I read to the BCIU at our wonderful event back at the beginning of April. "On behalf of the Exeter Township School District Administration, staff, and board, I am honored to chair our nomination for this year's Annie Sullivan Award, Mrs. Patricia File. Mrs. Patricia File, or Miss Patty, as she's affectionately called, exemplifies the spirit of this prestigious award. As an Exeter Township paraprofessional with nearly twenty years of dedication, Miss Patty currently supports students with social, emotional, and behavioral needs. Miss Patty understands and tailors her support to help and encourage all of her students. Her students and colleagues will tell you that her main characteristic is happy. She encourages all students and staff to smile, be positive, and she shares jokes to ensure positivity. Miss Patty exudes positivity and promotes joy in her students and to the adults alike, even through difficult times and long challenging days. The consistency in her mood and her never-wavering demeanor and bright attitude both model and promote student regulation and sometimes adult regulation as well. She actively participates in every school-themed day. An example, Miss Patty dressed up for Halloween as her cooperating teacher, Mr. Opalennick, who is present here, and we call him Mr. O, and a few of his students and her students followed suit, which included the perfect match of his very distinct hairstyle. A few of her students followed suit, and it was so much fun. She is first and sometimes the only staff member prepared for our building team breakfast, and we count on her for keeping us all straight and in line. Miss Patty is a certified teacher and understands different learning styles. She delivers her academic support with the same enthusiasm and encouragement as a classroom teacher. She tactfully coaches students to take academic risks and promotes a true love of learning. Miss Patty's energy is remarkable. Her activities may include several supportive walks with her students, numerous movement breaks, and some unplanned support in all areas of the building. Miss Patty truly promotes success for all of our students. As her building principal, Miss Patty is the warmest, kindest individual I've ever worked with. She cares so much about our students in our emotional support programming for the Exeter Township School District, which is housed at Lorraine Elementary. This year, Miss Patty has specifically changed one student's life. This student began his elementary education at Lorraine by refusing to go into any classroom. He is now transitioning his full day into his grade-level class with learning and her direct support. Miss Patty never misses a school day and is always happy to be here. We are beyond blessed to have her working with our ES population, as she's truly the sunshine of our program. We are lucky to have Miss Patty here at Lorraine and in Exeter, and she is our Annie Sullivan here in Exeter. Like Annie Sullivan, the importance and impact of Miss Patty to the students in her care is immeasurable. I am so grateful for this opportunity to acknowledge Miss Patty's work amongst all the wonderful examples people like her have on special education here in Exeter."
I believe Miss Patty would like to say a word or two. By the way, Miss Patty's whole team is here, the teachers that she works with, and some of the other power professionals are here to support her as well.
Actually, it's a couple more than just a few words. I just have to, I got busy writing, and here we go. My thanks go out to Mrs. Karen Hodge, the principal of Lorraine Elementary, and to Mr. Brad Binder, the retired supervisor of special education, who nominated me for the Annie Sullivan Award. It has been a great honor to represent the Exeter Township School District. I would like to share a few things about my life and the reasons for wanting to promote success in my students and also instilling a love of learning into their young minds. My own mother passed away from cancer when I was four years old. What a blessing it would have been to have some emotional support when I started kindergarten. I know how the loneliness and sadness of loss can affect school, daily life, and just about everything. We have two children. It was our son that struggled in school. He had trouble reading, doing math problems, and putting his thoughts down on paper. We spent a lot of time, effort, and financial resources to help him become a success in life. He was eventually diagnosed with dyslexia and other issues as he advanced through the grades here at Exeter. Every day, learning was a struggle for him and issues as he advanced through the grades here at Exeter. Everyday learning was a struggle. He could do all math equations in his head and give his teacher the correct answers each time. When it came to writing them down, it took a sheet of blocked paper for computing answers. We need to seek alternative techniques to advance his education. Textbooks and CDs freed me from reading his assignments. We went three years to the Scottish Rite Learning Center twice weekly for the Orton-Gillingham Approach for Children with Dyslexia. He worked hard in school and obtained good grades. He was then identified as gifted, and a second IEP was added. He wrote about his disabilities, and through his writing, he obtained a scholarship at RAC lasting two years. Since taking nine credits a semester was considered full-time for him, he wrote another letter to RAC asking if he could extend his scholarship. The scholarship was extended for another year. He graduated from RAC after three and one-half years with an associate's degree in computer science. During those years in college, our son worked in the computer lab at RAC. After college, he learned how to drive. He bought a house, got married, paid off his one hundred thousand dollar house in two and a half years, grows his own vegetables with knowledge gained from taking horticulture at the Votech for three years while at Exeter. He does canning, he's an avid hiker, and has a wonderful job working with computers. His title is presently Data Center Support Analyst. Our son gave me permission to share his success story. His journey has enabled me to want to help students in need, to spur them on, and to share the wonderful world of knowledge with them, so they too can become a success in academics as well as in their lives. Because of this desire to help other students and having a bachelor's degree from Melverna College in elementary education, I decided to ask Mr. Barry Webb for a volunteer position in the Exeter Township School District. He was the supervisor of special education at the time. Well, before he knew it, I had a part-time position, then a full-time position as parrot in the autistic support classroom, which was at ML Lausch, which is now at JacksonWalt. I worked with Karen Algejo, a fantastic teacher that is still there. I was also called on to be a substitute if needed and taught ESY for a couple of summers. I worked with autistic students for seventeen years before moving to Lorraine's Emotional Support Classroom. I was given the nickname Sunshine by the former principal of JacksonWalt. I now work with Mr. Joe Opalennick, the emotional support teacher at Lorraine. Another dedicated teacher has taught me that teamwork is the key to success, and has shared a wealth of knowledge with me. I now feel that with everyone working together, we can become our students' little bit of sunshine. With everyone working together, we can offer hope and make learning fun. Working together as a team, we can do it. I would like to give the Exeter Township School District a poem that our son wrote when he was twelve years old. With his permission, he used it for each graduating class at the Thirty-Second Degree Masonic Learning Center, which is now known as the Children Dyslexia Center. Please note, which I don't think you can see, everyone can see it, but it is typed to show the struggle that he had when he was learning to read in school, and it's called "Words." Words. The expressiveness flows uncontrollably out of my pencil I write with. Words. I write letters, a code to write, to read, to break. Words. Backwards Bs, upside-down Bs, missing words, missing lines. Words. Screaming to read them, but I tremble, fail, and the challenge to read them. Dyslexia. And it's by Zachary M. File, and it was written April tenth, two thousand and three. So, thank you so much for inviting me. It was a great honor to represent the school. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Patty. You really are our sunshine. Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have a presentation of a donation. I'd like to call to the podium Gail de Blazi, Board President of the Women's Club of Exeter, Sharon Serret, and Tiffany Evans.
Good evening. I'm representing the Women's Club of Exeter. I'm the current president, and Tiffany is our incoming president for next year. And Sharon was the cheerperson that made this event really happen the way it did. I just want to share with you a little bit about the Women's Club first. We're a nonprofit organization, and we've been in existence in Berks County for many years. Our stated purpose is to develop the educational, civic, and social interests of our members and to advance the welfare of the community. To that end, we sponsor several activities during the year with the intent of raising funds in order to provide needed support in our community, that is, within Exeter Township and beyond. In this past year, we have donated to the Exeter Library, provided scholarships to graduating seniors, provided books to the kindergarten class, which was quite an event for me because I don't know how to read to children. I found out I missed pages. We donated to the Ukrainian Relief Fund, provided support and recognition for our first responders, and gifted the District Attorney Center for Children who have experienced abuse. We've also donated to the Food Bank and provided support to the veterans in Berks and Lebanon Counties, plus more. This year, in lieu of doing our usual semi-annual fashion show, we opted to try facilitating a music bingo event. Since we are not known for keeping it simple, we also included a bake sale, a fifty-fifty, a basket raffle of over twenty-five baskets, and some simple food snacks to eat while people were playing. We had about a hundred and forty-five people come to our event, and they helped us to raise over six thousand dollars. We know that there are issues with families who are not able to afford lunches for their children. Our hearts go out to those who are struggling to pay their lunch debts, and so we opted for this event to focus on this issue. We understand that the school district has gotten some additional financial help for this cause, but we are also aware that the problem is ongoing. And so, we present this check to you to utilize towards this purpose. We are more than happy to have this opportunity to make a difference, and the amount that we're donating to the Exeter School District is four thousand six hundred and ninety-two dollars. Thank you. I just want to mention that we had a lot of help in order to get this done. We have a lot of donors, and we have a list here. I'm just going to leave it on the table over there. We would ask that you support these wonderful people who helped us get this job done. Thanks so much.
Thank you, ladies. Next on the agenda is the two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four budget update. Dr. Hallen, Mr. Feig?
Yeah, I know. Brian just made a comment that he didn't know if he could see that far, and I was like, yeah, I know. It's, yeah, seriously. So, the Exeter Women's Club is leaving, but I just wanted to say thank you, and organizations like that raise awareness in our community about the need that we are experiencing. Oftentimes, people hear Exeter, and they don't realize that we do have families that are in great need here, and the support of organizations like Giant and our homegrown, community-rooted organizations like the Exeter Women's Club really go a long way to support our families, so I just wanted to say thank you. So, with that, Brian is up here. I feel like I may have bullied him a little bit to come up to the podium with me, so I wasn't here by myself, and we're going to give our budget update, and hopefully this little clicker works better than last week. It doesn't. Yeah, Sheldon, Sheldon in the closet, you're gonna, oh, there we are, okay. So, we have one workshop meeting at this time left, and it is at our new transportation center. So, we would hope that you could come out and see our new transportation center and then listen to our last presentation on budget challenges and changes. To date, we've had a number of workshop meetings, and they're all aligned to the different timelines that school districts have in crafting a budget. We've included in all of our presentations a link to the timeline that's set forth by PDE, by Pennsylvania, that we must comply with, and you'll see we are on track at this point to meet all of those deadlines, and the end goal or the end expectation is that all school districts in Pennsylvania have a budget passed by June thirtieth. So, our first topic that we just want to review is the revenue stream that districts have, and most of it, again, this is from the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three school year, is coming from local revenue, and then the rest comes from state and from the federal government, federal revenue and grants. For the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, this is simply an estimate, because we can't be certain at this point exactly what we're receiving from state revenue and grants or necessarily exactly what we're receiving from federal revenue and grants. And as we've shared before, that sixty-eight percent has gone up by one percent, and it's not because of an anticipated increase in anything other than the interest that the district is receiving from the investments that they have. So, that's where that increase is coming from. So, we talked a little bit at our last meeting about the governor's proposed budget, and for everyone, just as a reminder, typically, the governor's budget comes out during the month of February. However, with the new administration coming in, that proposed budget was delayed till March. So, that really also delays the business managers or business administrators' ability to really firm up their numbers, because all of this is really essentially built on assumptions and will be until the budget is finally approved. So, this is what we know at this time. We know that there is new funding proposed, and we believe that Exeter may benefit from two sources: the school-based mental health block grants and possibly the environmental repairs upgrades in schools. The school-based mental health block grant is money that school districts would receive. We would not need to apply for a grant. However, we believe, based on the information we've been given thus far, that the environmental repairs and upgrades grant is something that the district would need to apply for, and if that grant comes through, we will most certainly do that. The funding increases that we are expected to receive are in the basic education and special education realm. So, as of right now, based on what Governor Shapiro has shared, there does appear to be increases, but again, this is, his proposed budget has not been voted on to date. There is additional funding that may benefit Exeter, but again, this is a proposed budget. We believe that we are eligible for the School Safety and Security Fund, also known as the PCCD grant, which is a grant that we are currently receiving, and we believe that we may be eligible for the Safe Schools Initiative grant, although we don't know what we will exactly be able to use that for and if we will absolutely be receiving it as proposed at this time. There is supposed to be funding available for the non-public school services, but that's not something that would impact Exeter, because we're obviously a public school. And then, funding decreases were proposed to the Ready-to-Learn Grant, which is a grant that we do receive at this time. We do not believe that we will be impacted by that, and there's also decreases proposed to pupil transportation, and that is an area that Brian has already determined we will be impacted by, and he's included in his budget. So, as we've said previously, the difficulty with building a school district budget is that it's built on assumptions, and the biggest assumption is that business administrators craft a budget based on what previous governor's budgets included. And as of now, the state has new leadership, and he's proposing a brand-new budget. So, we suspect at this time, based on the information that we're receiving, is that the governor's budget may not be finalized to July. This presents a difficult challenge to school districts, because as I started the presentation, I stated that we are required to pass a budget by June thirtieth. So, all school boards in Pennsylvania will need to vote and pass a budget by June thirtieth, even though the state budget, which is thirty percent of our funding, may not be passed till July or August. Yes.
Yeah, and to add to that, if you remember last year, and that was a normal budget year where we got the budget in February, the state didn't pass their budget to July eighth after we already had to pass our budget and put the tax bills out. And when I say past experience with governor's budgets, last year, the governor proposed an eighteen percent increase. We got roughly eight percent. So, I use the same percentage on this year's proposed increase, and that's why I budget. I didn't budget the full amount, because I don't think the legislature would give the governor the full benefit or the full amount that he's asking for, just from past experience. And normally, every year, it's above inflation, but it's less than what they ask for.
So, that leads us to the next bullet point. We just don't know how the state's proposed budget may impact the district's budget and that statewide. And the other assumption that business administrators make when putting together a budget is it's based also on the uncertainty of the economic situation that you're in at this time. Right now, Brian has in the budget an assumption for our health, for auto liability insurances. Those won't be finalized till later in the month of May. At this time, interest rates have been a friend to us, and we have been able to, we had about a little over a million dollars in interest received, which was obviously very helpful, and that impacts our revenue, but we don't know that that will be sustained. And then, the last, which has hit everyone very hard this past year, is inflation. We don't know if that will continue to go up, if that will go down, if it will stay where it is, but that's something that's definitely impacting our expenditures. So, as we've said, this continues to be a work-in-progress budget until it's voted on by the board, and the board is voting on a budget also based on assumptions that is being made and proposed by the administration. As of right now, we believe that this is where the budget will land. The majority of our expenditures are in salaries and benefits, but you can see that over the course of last year to this year, there has been increases in other areas, and much of that has to do with inflation. So, to better illustrate that, what we've done is we've put in a pie chart, so you can see where these expenditures are, and I'm going to turn it over to Brian, so he can talk through. Salaries and benefits are very obvious, but there's other functions within the budget that oftentimes are assumed to be one thing, and they're not. So, I'm going to turn it over to him, and he can explain that to you.
One thing I want you, as Kristi mentioned, salaries and benefits is the largest part of the budget. If you add that up, we're over seventy percent for salaries and benefits. Our debt service reserve, prior to last month, our debt service payment was over ten percent of our budget. Where the board approved restructuring, which brings us down to seven-and-a-half percent, I was just looking at the statewide average, and that puts us back to where the statewide average is. You know, we are always high compared to others. Areas like professional services, that can be anything from psychologists to accountants to lawyers. Then, we have purchased professional or purchase services. We're talking contracts for, like, last month, we approved the Johnson Controls Contracts for heating systems. We also have electrical contracts or electrician contracts and plumbing contracts. Other purchase services would be things like your propane, you know, heating for the buildings, water, sewer, the things that we need to keep to operate the buildings. And supplies is not just paper or toilet paper and cleaning supplies. It's also things like copy paper, gasoline for our vehicles, diesel for our vehicles. You know, those things also fall into supplies. You know, those, those things also fall into supplies. And property, which is a very small amount, but that's the purchase of either replacement equipment or brand-new equipment, computers. Every year, we, we refresh our, our computer stock depending on the grade level. You know, we're, we're keeping, I guess, five to six years, and then we're replenishing the laptops in where our one-to-one school now. So that comes out to a hundred percent of the budget. But when you take out salaries and debt service, you only have twenty percent of the budget that you really, really play with.
So to further illustrate the notable increases that we've seen, this is, again, the increases, not the total amount. We pulled out some of the ones that are going to impact the budget the most. So benefits and salaries, obviously, are the, the highest part of our budget at seventy percent. And we've seen a five percent and a two percent increase in the benefits and the salaries. While that's the highest amount, that's not the highest percentage increase. So as you, as you look down, we have the leasing of the buses, the increase to that is a hundred and five thousand dollars, it's, it's doubled. Electric, the increase itself is four hundred thousand dollars, that's at a ninety-eight percent increase. As Brian was saying, the paper products, toilet paper, paper towels, that's roughly two hundred thousand dollars increased. That's a three hundred percent increase than what we've seen, and this is, again, the impact of inflation. The fuel that we use, just the increase is a hundred eighty-three thousand dollars. And that includes the diesel and the propane, so we're looking at about eighty-eight percent increase there. Cleaning supplies, the, the increase alone is eighty thousand dollars, at an eighty percent increase. And copy paper, which obviously we need in all of our buildings, that was a forty thousand dollar increase. And that's at a hundred and five percent increase from what we've seen in the past.
Yeah, I, I want to make note on two things. Leasing of buses, it seems like a big increase, but last year, we made the conscious decision to start leasing of buses. We were spending roughly four hundred and sixty to four hundred and eighty thousand a year to purchase buses. So when we decide the lease, each year, it depends what the rates are going to be. But in a five-year period, we're going to still be spending four hundred and sixty to four hundred and eighty thousand. It's just a short-term savings, but the board knew that it will go up until it hits that amount, and we'll constantly be keeping that same, same type of payment. And then when we say leasing, we leased own. At the end of five years, we own those buses for a dollar. The electric, we had a really, really good deal for five years, which expires in May. We were only paying three point two cents a kilowatt hour. Last, I think it was February, we elected to go eighteen months at seven point two cents a kilowatt hour. So that's why the increase here. But we were way under market for the last three years in electric.
Can I, can I ask a quick question about the paper products and cleaning supplies? So the, the consumer goods that, that we're seeing those significant increases with, how, how are we purchasing the, the majority of those? Is that going through a consortium now?
It, it's going through a consortium, and actually, we're using two different suppliers, because it seems like weekly, whenever we call up, they might have an increase, no one might be less. We're picking whichever is the, the cheaper, I don't want to say cheaper, but less expensive per pallet, we, we buy in bulk.
Right, okay.
And right now, we're to, I hate to say, we keep about a week's supply, or we used to keep a month.
Yeah.
It's getting close to the end of the year, and things are expensive.
Have, have we looked at, at both purchases outside of the consortium? Are, are we pretty sure that, that it's still cheaper?
Problem is, we'd have to bid, because the amount is over twenty-four thousand dollars, so.
Right.
We're actually, we, we're in Berks County Consortium. We also use Co-Stars, we use Omni Partners, and there's another federal consortium. And at the last business manager's meeting for county, which I'm the president of the Mideast Chapter, which is Berks and Scoop, we were actually talking about trying to buy a tractor trailer load. You know, they did that in the beginning of the pandemic with the hand sanitizers and drinks, you know, because of how expensive it was in trying to find. And our concern was, you know, we don't want to get back into having extra, but we know toilet paper and paper towels are always going to be used sometime down the road. So, but we'd have to commit to the column, the quantities, and we still have tons of consensus on what quantities are over more than one. But we are looking at that, because it is cheaper to buy a tractor trailer load.
Okay.
And just the pallets.
Thank you.
So we had talked about notable cost savings, and we were looking at eliminating four positions. The one central office position was definitely eliminated, and the salary for that was one hundred and nineteen thousand dollars, and the benefits was approximately seventy-five thousand. We had two long-term substitutes at Reifton that were there for bubble classes. Their salaries equal about a hundred thousand dollars, and the, the benefits together were seventy-seven thousand. And then we had one professional staff member, that, that position's no longer needed. And that salary is about eighty-two thousand, with benefits being roughly fifty-nine thousand, for a savings of five hundred thirteen thousand, a little bit over. The other week, there was a question about should we retain those two long substitute teachers to use them as floating subs? We have not had our meeting with the, the union yet. That's certainly something that we can discuss as to where that, where that would look, if we, if the, the board would like to pursue that. But so you have an idea of what that cost is. It would be approximately a hundred seventy-seven thousand dollars for two long-term substitute teachers.
I would imagine, given the benefits addition there, that it would be on the less expensive side, if it was, if we're just using regular substitutes. Is that a safe assumption?
Regular substitutes do not get benefits. Long-term subs do. And, you know, when I, when I compute benefits, I look at two fac, these two-person. They could be family, which is like twenty-seven thousand, two-person, around twenty-two thousand. Or single, around eight or nine thousand, so it's a, it's a big difference. But we average two-person in the district, so that's what you use for benefits. But all the long-term sub, we have to give benefits. For regular substitutes, we do not get benefits. So the only benefits they would have would be the thirty-four percent for the pension, and the seven point six five for the FICA, Social Security, Medicare.
So the other area we talked about the other week was the impact of cyber charter schools on, on budgets. And the other week, we shared what the numbers were and what the total cost was. But we wanted to break it down a bit further. You can see that for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, we're anticipating approximately eighty-five students at the cost of close to two million dollars to the school district. So the board had asked, what does that look like compared to our own cyber school that the district funds? So we have the Exeter Cyber Academy. You'll see that we do the, this job at a much more cost-effective amount. For regular ed and special education students, the cost per pupil is about four thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. And that's because of the programming that we use. This also includes support from our own teachers. So if our students need one-on-one tutoring, that is provided for them. And it's also managed by one of our own teachers, as well as a support staff. So even with the salary supplies, we are coming in at a much more reasonable cost, which is one of the concerns that not just Exeter, but other school districts across the state have expressed to our, our lawmakers regarding the exorbitant cost of the cyber charter schools to school district budgets, and the impact that it has on school district budgets, because they don't have all the responsibilities that we have as a brick-and-mortar school, like toilet paper, like copy paper. We are incurring all of those expenses, fuel for buses, they don't have any of those. But yet, we are responsible to pay them the cost per student, which on the slide previously is close to thirteen thousand dollars for a regular ed student, and close to forty thousand dollars for a special education student.
And one, one thing I wanted to note, if we can go back one slide to the cyber. Yeah, during COVID, most school districts increased their enrollment in cyber by at least forty to fifty percent. Exeter did not, because we had our own cyber academy. So, you know, I keep on getting calls from state, you know, are you sure these numbers are correct? Well, yeah, it's because we had our own cyber academy. Where everyone else in the state actually lost a lot of students. And once they go into the cyber world, it's hard to get them back. So I, I, and our cyber academy is a good thing for us, that we're not pouring money out of the district.
So what are we doing with those eighty-five, those eighty-five student families? To, 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 to talk to them about the benefits of coming to the Exeter program? What kind of mailers do we do? What kind of interviews do we do? What, what is being done? Because if, if, if we save almost nine thousand dollars per student that comes over from cyber charter to Exeter charter, we'll call it, I don't know what, what, what are, what are we doing to try to bring those kids back?
We're personally calling them. So that, and now that we have a, a dedicated person in Jason Delesky, he's been calling each of those families, talking to them about our program, having them think about coming back, and just repeated attempts to contact them, basically cold-calling them, letting them know that there's one personal support in our program, and that the students will graduate with a Exeter diploma. In addition to that, there's some students that this may be a temporary. They temporarily went to cyber, cyber charter school for whatever reason. But if they come back to Exeter cyber, cyber school, and then decide they want to eventually go back to the brick-and-mortar, it'll be an easier transition for them, because they've already been working with Exeter teachers and exposed to Exeter programs. So we are, we are working on getting students back. And over the years, since we've had this program, we have gotten students back.
Do we do any data analysis on those eighty-five students to, to try to pull together what the reasons are that prevent them from coming back? So we can understand if it's something in our program that we're missing, if it's that they're happy with their program, and why they're happy with their program? So we can, I mean, that's all, that, that's as many kids in that program that are in our program. So it'd be good to understand, you know, if there's a common denominator that, that we're missing out on, or that, or is it controllable that we can't control? It would certainly be good to know that, and would help with our own resources.
We haven't, we haven't done that too deep, but that's, it's not something that we couldn't do or wouldn't do.
Dr. Hall, may I just add something to that really quickly? Keep in mind as well, there's a whole subdivision of our cyber program that is a supported cyber program, which offers an even deeper level of support for students. And for many of our students, being in that program has been so successful that it's actually been a preventive from them having to go to a more restrictive setting somewhere else off-campus. So there is some of that work that's being done in terms of, we have our overarching cyber academy, but then there's, you know, another aspect of it, another piece of it, that's much more individualized, and has some therapeutic components attached to it as well, for students who need that.
So how, how do we sell that, when we, when we talk to these families? Because I, I believe that our program is great, so, you know, how, how do we convince those families that aren't participating in it to come back?
We have a person who's our chief contract negotiator in the district. Her name is Mrs. Alicia Leonard. And in addition to negotiating contracts, she also helps to negotiate programming for families. And she works very closely with the high school team. Our high school assistant principals are a big part of those conversations, as well as our high school counseling team. So if you remember, I, in the past, I've talked about how we developed a framework at the high school for identifying at-risk students earlier, and with more frequency, so that we can provide more individualized services. It's actually all a part of that process.
I will tell you that when I was, when Brian and, and I were meeting with Dan Wilczek, who had been working with the, the cyber program before we brought in Jason Delesky, so his full dedication could be focused on our, our cyber program. Jason started calling some of the families that are in an outside program, and they didn't realize that Exeter had a program. So that's something, and, and some of it isn't, is because they transferred from other districts, and they were already in a program, and they wanted to stay in a program, in the program that they were in. So when they transferred, they just didn't realize that Exeter, Exeter had something. So not saying that they're, they're absolutely fully on board to switch over to our program, but it is a conversation that we're, we're having with families. And, and I think that Jason will, you know, as a, a former teacher at Reifton for many years, is, is a great person to speak to the benefits to, to being in Exeter and being in Exeter's program. What we wanted to draw attention to, everyone, to the board and to the community, is the total cyber impact on the budget. So, you know, we are basically duplicating services, and, and it's coming out of the, coming out of the same pot here. So, you know, looking across the board over the last three years, you can see that our program is coming in at a much less, lesser rate. But we're still required to pay for the out-of-district cyber placements. And the anticipated impact on the budget for this coming year is a little over two million dollars. So that is, that's a substantial amount that is, is, we're being impacted by.
It, it, just to, if you can confirm, we, we, as a, a public school district, are restricted from doing any kind of marketing to bring folks back into the program. Like, we can do the cold calling and that sort of thing, but we cannot, you know, do any kind of marketing flyers or anything. Or you, you see some of these charter schools, cyber charter schools, that will give away trinkets and o- other things at public events, where they have that latitude to do that, whereas a public school district is not.
Yeah, I mean, they, they, they do, they do a great job advertising, they do. Where you get a, a free public school education, and you get a free computer. Well, it's not free, because we're all paying for that. So, you know, that's, that's the issue, it's, it's, it's definitely not free. But, you know, they are able to get billboards and advertisements on TV. But you're right, that, and it wouldn't even, I don't know that it would be financially responsible, you know, either for us to, to do billboards and, and things of that nature.
We, we've complained to the state, because it is taxpayers' money that, you know, the, the cyber charters are sponsoring the members' rate, or running ads on TV or on radio. You know, it, it's taxpayers' money, because it's coming from us to, to cyber and, you know, four hundred or five hundred other districts.
There's no level of scrutiny there.
And, and what's even worse, as Mr. Hamburger and I were talking about this, Dr. Hamburger, I'm sorry, that, you know, Salisbury, their tuition rate for special ed is over sixty thousand dollars. Regular ed is twenty-two thousand, you know, so in the state, there's some regular ed, tuition rates in schools are down to seventy-nine hundred, and others up to twenty-five thousand. But the, you know, that's, cyber schools getting whatever the tuition rate for that school is, but they're giving the same education to every one of those kids. So, you know, it, it has to be addressed, but there's a lot of political lobbies out there.
So far?
Back one.
All right, there we go, there we go. So just to remind everyone where we are with the budget history. And we bolded the column that says difference, and we wanted to really draw your attention to that, because the difference, the negative, the difference that was made up, that came out of the fund balance since two thousand and fourteen. So we are required to have a fund balance in the, the state of Pennsylvania. Everyone, every school district is required to maintain a fund balance. That's, it's not a wish, it's a requirement. And when you draw from that fund balance, year after year after year, it puts the district in a very difficult financial situation, because it impacts something called your standard employers rating, which when PFM came to speak to the board about restructuring, that was that was one of the areas that they spoke most specifically on because the, the higher your rating, um, the better the interest rate that you, that you were able to get. So the only, one of the only reasons why the restructuring worked for Exeter was because the, uh, standard and poor's rating is, is, is high. It's a, it's, it's the highest basically that you can have. The issue is that it will most likely not remain that way um, because we have a history of taking from the fund ba- balance, drawing down that fund balance over the years to make up for a budget deficit. And then when you then borrow, it will, it's, it's like your personal credit score, except it's for the school district. It is impacted. So we are waiting on further information about, um, the restructuring and how and if it will impact our standard and poor's rating because we suspect that it will. Um, so in May, we will be talking more, uh, specifically about that. But we will need to look very closely at our, um, responsibility to, uh, the fund balance and how that impacts the district in the years to come.
Is there a specific, oh, I'm so sorry. Is there a specific, like, sweet spot that we're supposed to keep the fund balance at? A specific quantity or amount percent?
Has to be under.
I know it has to be under.
Under eight percent, but you know, if you look at eight percent, that's twenty-two days.
No, no, I, I understand that. I mean, I mean, like, when they're, when they're looking at us for a double A, do they want to see us at six? Do they want to see us at five?
What they don't want to see is constantly taken from fund balance. Uh, and I think we, we've talked about this and, uh, when you hired me three years ago, you wanted me to have a budget cut in half, the use of fund balance cut in half. And then by year three, to have zero use of fund balance. And that's my goal this year is have zero use of fund balance.
How much is our fund balance?
And I think when Christie started the whole budget presentations back in the beginning, you know, we kept on showing the slides that a balanced budget means revenues equal expenditures. And that's our goal to have your final budget in May, that revenues equal expenditures. So. Our fund balance right now is five point two million, it's six point seven percent, so we're around here.
Six point seven percent. So, yeah, well, what's twenty-one, right? Twenty-one days?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so six point seven is really close to eight.
Yeah, now, now, when you say, uh, fund balance, fund balance is determined that if you paid all your bills off today, that's what we left in your bank account. Now schools, as you know, like tonight, you're, uh, proving payments for last month. So we pay on a forty-five day cycle.
Right.
So we have more cash in the bank, but fund balance, if we paid everything off and all salaries and everything due and closed down, that's what will be left. So we do have some money to play with, a good forty-five days because we're not paying those bills for that day. But theoretically, we're on Peter to keep that going. You know, we're just moving the, the balance down the road a little bit.
So.
Now, now, if we were a district that relied totally on the state, like Reading or Chester, one of those, if the state doesn't pass a budget by the second week of July, they actually have to go out and borrow money to meet payroll because they don't have the cash. And that's another reason why you want to have some type of fund balance so you do have the cash and be able to keep operations moving. So.
I, I, when we had PFM in here and we were talking about the restructure, Jamie wasn't as definite that there was going to be, uh, an effect on our credit rating. Has something changed from that discussion between?
Uh, it hasn't changed. I've been going back and forth with them. Uh, I'm, I would say ninety-nine point nine percent sure we're gonna keep a double A. But I think they're gonna put us on a watch, which is a negative outlook that if they see, that you keep on taking from fund balance, they're gonna drop you.
I see.
Yeah, but I, I'll have definite for you on the, the count. I'm ninety-nine percent.
Okay. It's unlikely the restructure event itself.
The restructure event, they, they basically said, yes, that's gonna put you on the right foot. And that's gonna start you fresh. Uh, but they're concerned that past history, the boards never met expenditures equal revenues. Sure. You know, and I'm telling them, that's what I was hired for and that's what this board wants. And, and, you know, so they're basically saying, we believe you right now, but we're gonna make you prove it.
Is there any particular reason that we just don't keep the fund balance at, say, five point two percent and put the money somewhere else?
Well, they, it's, when they talk fund balances, non-committed, that fund balance you can use for anything. You know, in the past, you, you've set money aside to use for the future, uh, Peasars or the pension raises, which was going up five percent a year. And you drew down on that. So you, you can commit it, but that commitment has to be used within five years. You know, at one time, uh, back in, I don't know, two thousand twelve, they had excess and they put that into capital reserve fund. They could never bring that back, that capital reserve fund had to be used for capital projects. So if you commit something, you can put money aside and commit it, but it has to be used for that specific purpose. You can't just put it aside to hide it, you know?
No, I understand that. I just can't seem to figure out. I mean, the way that you're explaining it, which I understand, you know, we're paying before the state's paying us and all of this other thing and you, but it's our money that we are using before we're even able to prove it.
I totally agree with you.
Like, I don't understand why they don't understand that.
Because they're, we're still working off, uh, school code nineteen forty-eight, forty-nine.
Okay.
And what's interesting, if you look at the state budget, they actually have a separate rainy day fund that there's no limitations on.
Right. And that's why I don't understand why this fund balance is an issue.
But, but schools, they want to make sure we're, we're not overtaxing and hiding money from taxpayers.
Okay, that, that I understand.
And there was a lawsuit, I think, three or four years ago with, uh, Lower Marion that they actually lost because they were putting money aside in a, in a committed fund, but not using it for the commitment. And the court said, you have to give that back to taxpayers because you raised taxes.
Yeah, I completely, I completely understand that. I just don't understand how this company does and unders. That's where I'm confused. I apologize.
Oh, Mrs. Harris, did you have something to say?
I did, but Mr. Morgan was in a race to get his microphone on first. Did, may I, may I go first, Mr. Morgan? Well, I just wanted to, like, sort of simplify the point a little bit that you're trying to make with, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the point is that a negative outlook might be applied mainly because of the fact that we keep taking from that fund balance over successive years without necessarily having times where we're replenishing that fund balance. So it's like taking out of your savings account, taking, 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 and never consistently adding more back in, correct?
Yeah, and, and what happens, you get, you, and I think the board realizes since that's why they want to get back to balanced budgets because eventually you get to the point that there's no way to make, make it back up. You know, you don't want to go to the maximum index or even, you know, it's raise taxes, the index. But there, there's a point that you can't use fund balance anymore and that either raise taxes or cut services. And we are in this business to educate students and I think we're doing a good job. And we don't have a lot of excess programs, but we have the programs the, the community wants. So, you know, you're balancing a budget to maintain the services we have without adding additional and without overtaxing the public.
Mr. Pike, how much is in the current capital fund?
Uh, well, it's not committed. Right now, we have about three point six, but we committed for the projects with the hopes of re-borrowing and then replenishing that.
Understood. Do we have to replenish the capital fund after we borrow?
Uh, you don't.
Can we take that money from the loan restructure that we're doing and put it back into the reserves?
Yes.
And then second question, we built in the maintenance funds into the general budget, not into the capital budget.
Right. There's, in, in this budget that, uh, we're looking at right now, there's four hundred and sixty-eight thousand E in this year. Based on the next five years, there's just to, to do the general maintenance on projects that are less than fifteen years.
If we chose to use that, if we chose to pull that money from the capital, could we do that? For the maintenance, could we choo- choose to use capital instead of general?
You could, but I wouldn't suggest it because, you know, it's, it's not really long-term.
No, I understand that. I guess, I guess what I'm having a hard time with is, it's, it seems like we have options here, right? We have three point six million dollars in the capital budget. We're about to spend twenty-three million dollars on capital projects with money that we're gonna borrow. Safe to say, most of those are on a twenty-five to thirty-year life expectancy. We have three point six million dollars in a, in a capital budget. Who's to say that we can't come up with a number that's a healthy capital budget balance? So let's say, I'm gonna make numbers easy and I don't know what I'm talking about, so I'm just gonna make numbers easy and say, we keep a balance of two million dollars. When we borrow that money for, I believe it was the tennis courts and the HVAC for the junior high this summer, when we get that money back from that, we choose to keep a capital balance of two million dollars and put one point six million dollars back into our fund balance, which refunds where we need to be.
Yeah, and, and, well, one thing I would say, if you're gonna, and when you borrow, right now, we have three point six. So you can't put more than three point six unless you can prove that was interest earnings from the borrowing.
I understand that, but if we borrowed all three point six and we put two back into the capital and one point six into the fund balance, we certainly could do that if we chose to, correct?
You can always keep the capital reserve. You just can't, uh, keep bond funds past three years.
Understood. Uh, one of the things that I'd like to know then is what do we feel moving forward? If we're spending twenty-two million dollars on capital projects, what do we think is a realistic balance that we can keep in the capital fund? Because I don't want to have too much money in the capital fund and then worry about a rating on our funds when we could be, we, we could kind of figure out a way to borrow it and then push it back in where we can legally put it back and re- refund our fund balance in, in a way that makes sense for us, that doesn't affect the taxpayers, that puts us back where we need to be.
I think the, the other piece to that, we're restricted from, you, you can take from general to capital, but you can't take back out of capital to put it back in your general fund, is the.
Correct. Yeah, right. But you can take it out of, you can take it out of your fund reserves, right? If we feel so we.
We can take it out of reserves. I guess my, my point is, I, I would be cautious to, to what we would put in capital, I guess is all.
I don't disagree. I just, I don't, like, like I said, I don't know what that sweet spot is. But I don't, but we could be, we could have too much in a capital fund right now based on all the capital projects that we're doing. We may not need that much money in the fund. That could be better put up in somewhere else.
I was gonna say, well, a one-time refunding change our bond, like, oh, we, they've just put some money in there. Is that gonna, you know, make a difference for them or is it still like, this has happened for ten years in a row? A one-time refunding doesn't make a difference?
I guess the question is if we have a good, in my opinion, if we have a good three to five-year plan and we restructure that fund balance in a higher level and then we don't draw from that over the next amount of years. I mean, it seems to me that that's how you rebuild your, your rating.
And I, I can add back this because, uh, previous weekend, I spent the whole weekend working on things for the S and B. Uh, their biggest concern was not just the restructuring, it was about the future capital needs, which we were talking twenty million. Uh, they wanted to make sure we were covering everything that's, that's known for capital needs in the next five to six or seven years. Uh, we actually, you know, gave them the roof management plan when those starts going again, those in twenty thirty-four. Uh, you know, the only thing that would be an unknown is if we had a huge influx of students, which I doubt, so we're not gonna need additional building. So I, I think what we presented last time, we'll be talking more of that this summer or next couple of months in the capital plan. But I, I think we got everything needed to cover. You know, there might be things of a new turf field or something, but that's up to the board. But that's really not a huge amount, but still, it's, it's, you know, those types of things. But we got everything covered to keep things going the way they are on capital needs. Right? Existing facilities, existing fields.
Yeah, I, I guess to, uh, to kind of jump back to it, it, for example, next year, uh, if we don't balance the budget and we end up having to take from reserves, that's the threat that we're gonna face with the credit rating, right?
So, you know, you, you'll have to be, as a board and administration, will we have to be thoughtful about the crafting of the budget and what, uh, tax increases look like, um, moving forward? Um, or if we'll be able to bring in a balanced budget again? While we're all hopeful, um, to bring in, uh, a budget every year with no tax increases, that's just not, um, that's not realistic. Um, because as we saw on the notable increases, things, things go up. And one of the ways that school districts bring in a balanced budget is because their revenue equals their expenditure. And school districts' revenues are in large part funded by, unfortunately, taxpayers because that's the way that the, um, structure in Pennsylvania is set up in order to fund schools. So it's important that all of these things are kept in line moving forward and that we're very thoughtful about the use of a fund balance using, going forward. Um, because that's not what it's meant to, to do, um, is to constantly, as Brian said, draw from it.
And one other thing I wanted to mention with the, the state budgets, like when you mentioned Shapiro's budget, uh, he's asking for this large increase this year, noting that he doesn't expect large increases in the future years because we had one last year, he wants to give another one this year. And then the future years is really gonna be based on the equity and trying to figure out how to, uh, make school funding fair, or if the lawsuit was lost by the state. So I'm, I'm hoping in future years, it's just around inflation rate, we'll get an increase and not less, but we'll see.
So we felt that this piece of information was important. It was actually shared with us from Dr. Hamburger today as far, as part of the advocacy day. Um, and this came directly from PSBA, um, regarding, um, fund balance and why it's important. And, um, as you can see, it says that, um, it is, it is critical to school district operations, um, that we are required to have it, um, that the purpose of it is to respond to emergencies uh, because we don't know, the pandemic was a perfect example, you, you don't know when an emergency is going to happen. Um, that without state funding through, uh, programs like PlanCon, school districts, uh, do need to have some type of cash on hand in order to, uh, address, uh, critical needs for infrastructure, um, which is essentially where we are in this district. Unfortunately, because we have a high, uh, rating, we were able to, to borrow to get those, um, needs met. Um, however, not having a good credit rating does reduce the ability of a school district to borrow. So that's why the fa- the fund, having a healthy fund balance is, is critical. Um, and, um, that you, you know, that you, you need to be able to, to maintain that. So, um, we pulled that, uh, directly from that, uh, information that came out today and included it in this presentation because we thought that it was important, but also timely to this conversation um, as we think about, uh, crafting the budget in, in even next year, but in future years. Um, because unless they, they change something, um, this is the responsibility of, uh, school administrations in cooperation with boards to maintain a, a healthy fund balance. Um, and, and that's something that we are required to do. And then as we said, um, we've, we've ended every presentation with that, with a glossary, a link to the glossary. We believe that that's very important, um, because there's a lot of terms that we use during these presentations that may not be familiar to people. Um, and as, as people are interested in the budget and learning about the budget process, we think it's really important that they have an understanding of the terminology, um, that's used and that we're using when we're talking about, uh, the budget process. So that is the end of our presentation. Um, does anybody have any other questions? Well, thank you.
And please come next Wednesday?
Yep, on the twenty-sixth.
Budget meeting at the, uh, transportation center. The transportation center was under a temporary occupancy. There's still punchless items, but, uh, we're actually moved in and we're using the, uh, facility and they're doing maintenance on the vehicles.
Thank you, Dr. Howler and Mr. Pike. Um, next, we will not be amending the agenda. So next would be public comment. No one has signed up. Board meeting minutes. If there's no objection, we will adopt a motion to approve meeting minutes from last month's board meetings, March seventh, twenty twenty-three, board committee of a whole, and March twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, board voting meeting. Hearing no objections, the minutes are approved. Treasurers report repayment requests. If there's no objection, we will adopt an motion to approve. If there's no objection, we will adopt a motion to approve the March twenty twenty-three, Treasurers' report and payment request dated March seventeenth, twenty twenty-three to April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Hearing no objections, Treasurers' report and payment requests are approved.
Dr. Herring.
Yes, sir.
Is it possible we could move personnel above education tonight? I think we have some young people in the audience that are anxiously awaiting it.
Sure.
That's Brian, I swear.
And they're doing great.
Okay, sure, personnel, Ms. Schaefer, Mrs. Schaefer. Starting off with item A, course request. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the attached list of course requests.
Second.
Sorry, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Okay, under item B, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the attached updated job description for custodial supervisor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Under Personnel Committee Consent Agenda, item C. And of note, the areas in bold have been added since the last committee, the whole meeting. It is recommended that Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following personnel items. I'm going to do number one, resignations, and two, retirements at this time.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. It is recommended that Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following personnel items under item three, which is appointments. All items under A for, are eight administrative staff, certificated staff A through D, contracted staff A, guest teacher A, substitute teacher A. Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. It is recommended that Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following personnel items. This needs to be changed. Change of status should be listed as item number four instead of B. So item number four, change of status, and also item number five, which are leaves of absence.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. At this time, we'd like to take a moment to pause and remember Mr. Robert Brusie, who passed away following a brief illness during the district's spring break. Rob was our supervisor of facilities and joined Exeter in two thousand sixteen. During his time here, he oversaw the facilities, maintenance, and grounds teams, playing a vital role in the upkeep of our buildings and fields throughout the district. Although we know that many of you did not know Rob, his work was very visible to all who stepped onto our, into our buildings, onto our fields, and his help, and his helpful nature, friendly disposition, and dedication to his work will be missed by all who had the pleasure of working with him. Rob was surrounded by his family when he passed away, and we hope everyone continues to keep his wife Jennifer and children Brian, Jason, and Margaret, as well as his Exeter colleagues. In your thoughts? Thank you. And that is it for the Personnel Committee.
I would just like to say that we are delighted to have recruited Mrs. Tricia Seifert away from Governor Mifflin's School District, particularly because she is an Exeter resident. We are super excited to have her on board. She's a seasoned special education administrator, particularly in the area of elementary special education. She shares our passion for building relationships with families and for building outstanding programming for our students with disabilities. So welcome aboard, Trish.
Welcome to the family. Okay, next is Education Committee, Dr. Battler.
Thank you, Dr. Herring. Under A is the enrollment report. If I has no questions. We will head to B. It is reported the following field trips below within the sixty mile radius have been approved, one through fourteen. And then it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the following Education Committee items. Number one, the field trips you on a sixty mile radius, A and B. And number two, yeah, and number two, you know what, I'll separate that, I'm sorry, just number one, sorry.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the following Education Committee items. The following list of staff conferences, one through six, or one through fourteen.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstained, spouses listed.
Thank you, and you'll be handing in a report?
Yes, I will.
Thank you, sir.
Trying to keep it short, sweet.
Sorry, Mr. Mall.
Okay. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the following Education Committee item. The settlement agreement and release between the parents individually on their own behalf and on behalf of their minor child, as proposed and further authorizes the Board President and Board Secretary to execute the settlement agreement and release on behalf of the district.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the following Education Committee item. The number four and number five can be.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
And that's all for the Education Committee.
Thank you, Dr. Battler. Finance Facilities and Audit Committee, Mr. Mall.
Thank you, Dr. Herring. The only thing I have is the consent agenda, item A. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the following finance facilities and audit items. Item one, budget transfers. Item two, disposal of senior high school math books. Item three, the expenditures for BCTC. And item four, the safety and security purchase.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Dr. Herring, that is it for my committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Mall. Policy Committee, Dr. Hamburger.
Thanks, Dr. Herring. It's recommended that the Board of School Directors approve policy number two hundred enrollment of students for first reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you, Dr. Herring. That's all for the Policy Committee.
Thank you. Athletics and extracurricular, Mrs. Wilson.
Yes, this past weekend, many of our junior high students, our musical students participated in the county festival. So I'd like to congratulate our band, chorus, and orchestra junior high students for their participation in that festival. I also would talk to Mr. Legath today, and he reports that all of our spring sports are off to a successful start. Our varsity boys track and boys volleyball teams right now are both undefeated. He's looking forward to sharing more good news in the upcoming weeks. I spoke with Dr., Mr. Legath today about possibly inviting our championship teams from this year to one of our upcoming board meetings. We're looking at either May fifteenth or June sixth, depending on graduation events. So we're gonna look to have them to our board meeting to celebrate some of our great teams and individuals this year. Also, I'd like to encourage everyone to check out our district calendar because I know right now we have many art shows and spring concerts that are coming up for everyone to enjoy. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have enough room for all those people in our boardroom? That's a lot of champions. Thank you. Exeter, yes, it is. Exeter Community Education Foundation, Dr. Battler.
Thank you. At ECEF's April meeting, there are some exciting executive leadership changes. The new Board President is Jason, excuse me, Jason Schaefer. Who has served on the ECEF Board since two thousand thirteen and was most recently Board Vice President. Taking over the Vice President role is Heather McCool, who has been with the Board since two thousand twenty-two. We are very excited to work with Jason and Heather in their new roles. Ange Cook is now officially the new Executive Director for ECEF. Ange has served on the Board since two thousand fourteen and has been Board Secretary and most recently Board President since two thousand twenty-one. Ange worked very closely with her dear friend and former director, Amy Lutz, for the past five years and is grateful to ECEF for their support and to Amy for guiding her into this role. ECEF is excited to welcome back to our Board Ellen Albright. Ellen previously resigned from the Board in two thousand nineteen after six years of service to focus on personal and professional endeavors. And we are so excited to have her back on the Board to help us doing great things for Exeter. Big thanks to Carrie McCarty and Greg Lane for visiting ECEF's April Board Meeting to present the results for the first Spring Craft and Vendor Fair in March at the Reifton School. Proceeds from the vendor fees totaled eleven hundred and ninety dollars, and all of the monies will go towards the ECEF Student Outreach Initiative. Thank you to Carrie for organizing and to all of the vendors that participated in the fair. There's still time to order a legacy name, excuse me, to order a legacy named personalized brick before we close ordering during our Phase Five of our joint project with Exeter Alumni Association. The bricks are a great way to show your Exeter Eagles pride and make great graduation, retirement, or memorial recognition gifts. Forms can be found on ECEF's website, wwwexitereducationfoundation.org, under Ways to Give. The final day for order submissions is June thirtieth with installation expected in late summer. The Second Annual Food Truck Festival is about a month away, and we are very excited. Make sure to follow our Food Truck Festival event page on Facebook for all updates and for announcements on vendors and food trucks that will be joining us. Lastly, ECEF wants to publicly acknowledge and congratulate Dr. Josh Hoyt on his upcoming new role as Director of Teacher and Learning, Teaching and Learning for the District. Josh has been a valued ECEF Board Member since two thousand twenty-one and has been instrumental in our allocations committee and as our technology chair. We are so proud of you, Dr. Hoyt. That is the end of my report.
Thank you, Dr. Battler. BCTC Joint Operating Committee, Mr. Fidler.
The next meeting will be Wednesday of next week, so unfortunately I'll have to miss the budget presentation. But I'll be hard at work enjoying my meal.
Thank you. Dr. Hamburger, can you cover BCIE Board Directors and Legislative Liaison?
Yeah, we'll do. First, BCIE report, our next meeting is scheduled for this Thursday, April twentieth, at six fifteen PM. In terms of legislative report, we did have a COLA meeting, that's the Council, Committee on Legislative Action. That was this past Tuesday, April eleventh. It featured Hannah Barak, who is the Executive Director of Pennsylvania Association of School Business Officials, also known as PASBO. Hannah reviewed the proposed budget, talked about the proposed seven point eight percent increases in special education in the general fund and the basic ed funding. And there were several handouts, there was a lot of information provided, and I forwarded that information to the Board earlier this week. The other item I just wanted to talk about is Advocacy Day, which was today. This is something that PSBA sets up every year. This year it was done virtually, as it had been for the past couple of years. There was a time we used to go to Harrisburg, which was really always fun because we'd visit them in their offices and meet their staff and, and had a chance to really gather as a group. This was done a little bit differently online with the preparation period, a meeting last night. And then we met with our representative Judy Schwank today at three o'clock. Participants were from other districts in Judy's district. That included Governor Mifflin, Quitztown and Redding School District, as well as Exeter. The focus was really a lot on funding. Education funding was the big priority. And PSBA, in their talking points, really wanted to hit home the idea that we're asking now for historic investments in basic education funding. Now's the time. And also looking for an increase of at least two hundred million dollars for special education this year. That's in addition to the increase that's already been proposed in the government's budget. Tech centers, there's an ask for twenty-five million dollars more in the budget. That was also part of our conversation today. Mental health, school safety, a hundred million dollars in each of those areas as well. And then charter school reform, of course, we've talked about charter school, talked about the impact on our budget. That's something Senator Schwank is very much aware of, as a matter of fact. She's proposed her own legislation that would really help school districts significantly. And I think she's probably gonna bring that back in this particular session. Didn't make it through last year. But it, in, in her particular proposed legislation, parents would have to pay for a cyber, cyber charter education in the event their school district offered a cyber program and the parents opted not for that cyber program and decided instead to go with the, you know, the charter cyber program. That would, that would make a big difference in Exeter's budget to the tune of about two million dollars, I think. So something to really support when it comes, if and when it ever sees the light of day. In that, Senator Schwank is in, in, in the Senate, in Harrisburg. It's very unlikely that it will move forward, but you know, certainly something we will always continue to encourage, as well as any other legislation. Of course, we want to see reforms to the charter, a, a basic tuition. The idea is single rate for all school districts across the state and then a tiered, a tiered formula for special education. So that districts are not, you know, paying an exorbitant amount of money for a student that has, let's say, a very minor IEP, such as maybe a speech IEP. So that was our conversation today. Of course, Judy Schwank is one of the most receptive, one of the most accommodating of, of all the senators and, and all the legislators in, in Harrisburg, and was very pleased that she was there today. It's unfortunate that the other representatives from our district were not willing to participate in Advocacy Day. And that's typically been the case. Judy Schwank has been the number one person, has always, has always participated. We want to really extend our, our gratitude to her for being an advocate for public education and always engaging us in dialogue regarding our, our needs in public education. So that's all for my report. Thanks, Dr. Herring.
Thank you. Township Borough liaison, Mr. Mall.
Thank you, Dr. Herring. Just a quick update, last Thursday, the Metropolitan Development Group held a town hall meeting at the Redding Country Club. I was in attendance along with Superintendent Dr. Howler, as well as Mr. Fidler. And really just there to see the information that was presented, you know, mainly in terms of, again, the predicted or projected child ratio of the two hundred and sixteen unit apartments based on the comparable complexes that they were showing that had the same, what they call garden style apartments. It was coming to around sixteen children in, in, in that projection. I had also sent an email to Mr. Rathfon over there at Metropolitan Development Group, just letting him know that the school board had not taken a position, either favorable or unfavorable, towards the development, but we were interested in just understanding those projections. And he did offer to send a packet to us with some additional supporting information sometime this week. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Next would be public comment, but I'll leave anyone signed up for that. Would anyone on the Board like to be heard at this time, then? No? Okay. I did want to ask Brian if he can give an update on the sign, signage that Mr. Quinter had brought up a couple of meetings ago?
Yes, the, the state rejected the size of the sign that Mr. Quinter had suggested. We've gone back and asked him exactly what this size sign is permissible on the state road since Brook Ilman Avenue is a state road. I'm still waiting to hear that back. I have a feeling though, once I get that back, it's gonna be a square inch. So we'll have to figure out. So we'll have to figure out, and maybe a a certain size letter, so we'll have to, once we get that back, we'll be able to figure that out. But they said that's bigger than their their speed limit signs, the one that was suggested, and that's not allowable on the state road.
What what size did we ask?
We we had, I think, four lines?
Four, four lines?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, all right, thank you.
Okay.
Uh, okay. Please note that we will be meeting tonight for an executive session to discuss school security. Our next board meeting will be on Tuesday, May second, at six P M for a committee of a whole, hearing no objections, we'll adjourn.